From, uh, Theresa, I haven't. Okay, well. It's six o'clock. Regular meeting Windsor Heights City Council come to order. Roll call.
Theresa. Eric.
Joseph Jones. Matt Supredo.
Yes.
And just, and, um, Mike Jones.
Yes.
Okay. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation. Maybe we'll get back to real stuff here pretty quick, but thank you. Uh, next item is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Theresa.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Supredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public forums. Set aside for comments from the public on items of city business other than those that are on the agenda. Please. Say your name and address and Whitney will unmute you.
Good evening, Dave. This is Judy Howard, 1035 64th Street. How are you?
Go kicking.
Hello, council.
Hi.
Just wanted to, um, give you a heads up on a email conversation I had last week with our interim city administrator. I had concerns of my norm, parking on the yard. And so I was very shocked to find out we don't have a code enforcement officer, but talked to the city administrator. And so in our conversation, he let me know, um, that he was aware of cars parking on the yard. Didn't sound real concerned. And. I concern voiced my concerns. He said he needed pictures. He walked outside. He looked at the truck at 1145 65th Street. And wanted to argue with me about two wheels, whether or not it was a violation because of two wheels. Now, we all know cars parked on the yard is a violation of our city code. So I sent him a picture, even though he got to see that one with his own two eyes, then I sent him a picture of 1030 63rd. Another concern. He thanked me and then went on to send me an email and I would like to read it to you now. The requirements regarding the city, what the city code is able to do with code enforcement issues. These procedures can take extended periods of time and may not result in the violation being corrected in the way that someone would find acceptable. While these enforcement actions are underway, it may look like nothing is happening. Property owners, including owners of vehicles, have rights to their property that the city must respect in any enforcement action. Just because the city code includes language that describes a particular situation as a violation doesn't mean that the city has the right to confiscate property or demand immediate changes to a situation. For issues involving chapter 50 of the city code nuisance violations, the code requires that alleged violators be given the opportunity for a hearing before the city council. Before enforcement action can be taken. For code violations that are not considered to be a nuisance, i.e. not referenced in chapter 50 of the city code, the alleged violator probably has due process rights through legal procedures that the city attorney would be more familiar with than I am. Just because, most important part of my email, folks. Just because the city code says that situation X is a code violation, doesn't mean that the city can instantly enforce consequences on the alleged violator. There is no beginning, there is no end to that email. It doesn't reference myself and it doesn't reference the interim city administrator. I think that was a little rude in and of itself, nonetheless. If a person goes 75 miles an hour down university, I'm pretty sure we can enforce the code. And if a car is parked on the yard, I'm pretty sure we can enforce the code. And as I said to the gentleman, I'm sure he's very busy. But that does not give him the right to argue with me about how many wheels constitutes being parked on the yard. So I would ask that we could please have any and all vehicles that are parked on the yard in the city of Windsor Heights removed. It is a bit. Hmm, I don't know, skeptic maybe, that all of the sudden, after these emails took place on Friday afternoon, that we now have a resolution in our agenda this evening regarding the exact code that I spoke of, parking? Kind of funny, don't you think? I thank you all for your time and I hope we will continue to make Windsor Heights beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone else?
I have a question. I have a question about that. Ms. Howard, if I'm understanding you correctly, are you saying that we should tow people's vehicles away if they are parked on the yard?
No sound.
I think she may have, no, she's.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
Okay, I apologize. No, absolutely not, Mike. I do not do that way at all. I, um, apologize. I have a puppy. I am ever so sorry about that. No, Mike, my concern is that we don't have, we have a lot of rental property these days. And we have residents that move in and move out of our town and they aren't really familiar with how we live. We don't live like people in Arkansas or the east side or, or whatever. We're Windsor Heights. We are better than that. And so the, I think the right thing to do is that you address the violation and you address it either with a telephone call or with a letter is the appropriate way, I believe. Um, and let them know, you know, we don't park in the, on the yard in our city. We park on hard surface, asphalt or concrete. I think it's real simple. Our, you know, I don't know how long you've lived here, Mike, but I've lived here since 1984. And when I moved in, my property taxes were 900 a year. Now they're 4,000. Okay, that's fine. I live in Windsor Heights. It's worthy of 4,000. It is not worthy, sir, of people parking their vehicles on the yard. Now, I'm not sure who's got the close to $300,000 house in the bunch, but I don't think you want a car parked on the yard next to your house. Or parked on the yard with its headlights pointing down into your house. Would you like that, sir?
If you're asking me, no.
Yes, I am. Because I thought we were having the conversation.
Well, no, no, I, I, I would not want that. I was.
No, I don't know what gave you the thought. Excuse my interruption, but I have no idea what would ever, uh, make you think that I would want something removed. I, I found it quite interesting that we would confiscate. What would there be to confiscate? I think it was a little over the top.
The question, I think, is, um, based upon your comments made, the, the searching for the solution and I'm, I was asking you what the solution was. So you have answered that question for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Is it possible for, uh, council to look into this further with Mark about the nuisance, uh, abatement and kind of how it's administered? Just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Doesn't the abatement, though, really come quite a little ways down the line? I mean, I don't know what the city is doing since we don't have a code enforcement officer right now, but I do know in the past, things were handled, as I said, by way of sending a resident a letter, you know, sending the owner of the property a letter. Let them know, this is what we do. You know, could you please put your car on a hard surface? And, and we move on. I mean, I just don't think it's that big of a deal. I don't know. I didn't, I surely didn't think it rated, um, this gentleman being so rude to me, that's for darn sure. And I'm not really sure why he would want to argue city code when he told me blatantly he didn't know what city code was. So, you guys feel like I do. We like our city. The gentleman doesn't live here, but we do.
Judy, thank you very much. We are going to move on. We will take it under, under advisement and, uh, we'll continue to get your, uh, uh, emails and whatever on the, uh, code enforcement. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is. Let's see, can, let's see, consent agenda, motion to approve.
You are muted. You are unmuted.
Somebody. Okay, consent agenda.
Adam, I have a motion by Mike.
Can I second it?
Okay.
Roll call.
Susan?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Supredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And harms.
She said she's on the phone. Um, she's just having problems connecting. Uh, she sent a text, uh, about five minutes ago or so.
Next item is old business, consideration of resolution 2076, extending the temporary community center fee reimbursement enclosure policy due to the public health threat of coronavirus. The estimated revenue, revenue loss is $40,934.13. Motion.
Participants in the meeting, this meeting is being recorded.
Any discussion on that?
Well, my understanding, um, reading the council packet and the request, it was, it looks like it was back in May sometime and I think that the ask, you know, was based upon recommendations on uh, large gatherings. My understanding is that that changed today. Someone correct me if I'm wrong. No? Yes? Well, I'll tell you, it changed today. Um, it's 50% capacity and social distancing and hygiene. I don't know if we could consider something like that.
Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, yeah, Dave. I, I think it's time to open that up. I mean, 40, $41,000 essentially is a lot of money. And regardless of the money, I think there's strategic ways to organize that. Mike alluded to some of them. Where people can have their weddings, they're going to have them somewhere. And maintain social distancing. It's a pretty large venue there. And so I, in my opinion, yeah, it should end when we, uh, not extend it.
Anything further?
Does anybody know what other communities are doing, um, now that we're kind of in this weird transitional period that we're at? Um, do we know what other cities or other venues are doing? Cause I'm not opposed to opening it. I'm just questioning what other cities are doing to kind of base what we do on.
I know some of them are talking about it, but if, and I don't doubt what Mike is saying is true. This was just issued today, then nobody's really had time to consider what they're going to do. So I wouldn't be surprised to find that some are going to open their facilities. That's kind of the conversation I've heard up to now, but there was never a date to measure that with.
Well, we know, we, we know, Mark, that there's, uh, opening up in Des Moines restaurants and various other places and, um, this is a, uh, I think, an item that can be handled safely. And, uh, I just don't see a reason to extend it.
And this, this is good until June 15th, correct? If I'm reading this right, we're still closed down until June 15th from the last set.
I thought it was longer than that. I thought it was till the 30th.
Well, our resolution said to closure of community center from May 31st until June 15th. And allowed renters for events scheduled between the 15th and July 15th, the voluntary council to receive a full refund.
So what he's asking is to extend it to June 30th, correct?
Correct. With an optional to July 31st, unless they lift the restrictions on, you know, large, large gatherings. So basically this is, uh, where we would go until the 30th, which is a 15 day extension over what we already have.
Dave, Dave, the governor has opened up the ability to use that center.
Governor's opened it up to make, we make our choice of what we want to open it up or not.
Dave, Dave, I didn't say that they, we, we didn't, not arguing with that. But I'm saying it is available to open up by state guidelines.
Yes.
Now, whether we do it or not, you are correct. It is up to this council.
Correct.
And I think it's time, again, to do it safely. And I think there's processes that are clearly defined on how to do that. So that's my opinion.
Dalton, you got a comment?
Yeah, sorry, my microphone is muted there on the keyboard. Uh, so there's really, there's two questions that we need to answer. One of them is, do we want to continue extending the mandatory closure period? And the second one is, do we want to continue to allow people to cancel and reschedule their events outside of that mandatory closure period? So if, uh, a wedding is allowed to take place in the center, but they're only allowed to have 50% of their guests, my assumption is that there's going to be quite a few people that want to reschedule. And so are we going to let them reschedule? Are we going to let them get their money back? It's also worth noting that that $40,000 figure, that won't be like a hard cost interd- in, in, incurred to the city, but it will be deferred revenue. So it's not like we're, it's money that we've already collected. It's not like a bill that we're going to have to pay. Or it could be somebody, uh, reserving a weekend next year and it's just going to be revenue that we don't collect next year. So from the finance, obviously this discussion, it's coming from like a safety and wellness perspective, but there is a financial impact. So first and foremost, um, it's about like our, our renters' safety and I think we should make that clear. But second off.
Yeah, and, and my suggestion that I've offered previously doesn't negate safety first. That, that's, oh, you know, that's the number one priority is safety first.
This kind of goes back to what Mark said in his staff report at the last council meeting. We're, we're kind of leaving it up to the council on when you guys want to open stuff back up, like the park, the dog park, the community center, whatever else. So I, I feel like I'm more comfortable with the council making that decision. If you want to tell me, go ahead and do it whenever you're ready or whenever you think's best. I, I can, but I think it would be best coming from the five of you and the mayor.
Well, Dalton, I agree with you, uh, that there's, unless, unless you have a crystal ball, council's opinions, I guess, are as valid as anybody else's. And so that's probably a good thing.
Well, I'm, I'm coming back. This was an ask for this, this, you know, this request was dated, I think, the 18th of May and the proclamation signed on the 26th. You know, instituted the new rules for mass gatherings, allowing, you know, 50% capacity, social distancing. You know, other, the other, I guess, quote unquote, uh, guidelines or requirements in there. So, I think it would be a worthy conversation to have about whether or not we want to extend it or, you know, indefinitely. Or if there want, we want to have some sort of conversations about when we're looking for, when we're looking for a timeline to open it back up.
Any thoughts on when you want to open it up, Mike?
Jeb, did you flush? Flush, I can hear you flush.
Who's talking?
Um.
What is that, Dalton?
End of the month. I don't know. I mean, you know, some sort of good, um, notice, but you know, this is a hard date of when we're going to, uh, do this.
You suggesting that, uh, the 30th of June would be the reopening time and is that just for CEC and park and everything else all at the same time?
Yeah. I mean, it's just an idea. I mean, I'm just, well, the governor's, the governor is, is allowing these things. So either we can continue to keep these things closed, that's fine, or we can have a conversation about opening them back up. That's fine too. You know, but things have changed since this originally happened, since this recommendation was originally made. I figured we could have a discussion about that. If no one wants to chime in, I guess we can vote on it.
Any other comments? Michael? Susan?
No.
Theresa, you on?
She is. She just sent me a, a message that she's trying to speak. She can hear. Um, I said that it looks like she's muted, so I'm hoping maybe she'll try to fix it.
Hi, this is, uh, just that I'm unmuted. Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I have never had these issues. Thank you for, I'm very frustrated right now. Um, anyways, well, thank you. I had several comments about this. I think what I, um, I appreciate the conversation for that, that I've been able to, um, catch. I think that, um, I'm of the mindset right now that, uh, or I actually have a couple of questions for Dalton if he's got some answers. Have we had anybody asking if they can have their events through the end of this month? Has anybody requested inquiring whether or not that's available or had, or do we have any that haven't canceled for the duration that you're looking to cancel through the end of the month?
Uh, Whitney handles the day to day, so I'll defer to her, but my understanding is that yes to both of those questions.
Yeah, that, that's correct. We have people that wait till the very last minute to make a decision on whether they're going to reschedule or receive a refund. And there are people that are still holding on to their dates.
Okay, so based on that answer, what I guess I would recommend at this juncture is that, because I know of weddings that happened this past weekend, where they implemented all the social distancing practices and those sorts of things. If that's something that somebody wants to know, I think we let them know what the capacity is for the space that they have requested and the capacity limits based on 50%. And note that most, you know, people are making those sorts of accommodations. They know that it's smaller groups and those sorts of things, but they want to move forward with their event. So, um, my position, um, right now is that if that's something that they want to do, um, then, um, and they've reserved the space, that, that, that would be appropriate. So I would suggest that we, we open it, um, as of, um, what does our last resolution say, the 15th, right? Um, so I would recommend that we open it or that we, that we open it back up, um, as of the 15th and make that available for, um, for whatever events are, um, they're, you know, requested for. And then that we can continue to evaluate it, um, just as the governor is doing and, um, her, her space, that we can continue to evaluate and determine whether or not um, we need to, to close it or not. Um, I would also recommend that, um, we open the park and the dog park, um, immediately. I have looked around and seen most, most cities didn't even close their dog parks. And, um, I've gotten some calls and emails, um, from constituents in Windsor Heights asking for the dog park and the park to be reopened. Again, I think we can put out some, some appropriate policies and statements about the care that you should take if you're utilizing those facilities, but, um, and I think we could, um, and should put up some signage reminding people to practice appropriate social distancing and proper hygiene. Um, but so I would, I would actually like to make a motion that we, um, if we need to, I guess, if we have legal counsel on, um, I can't see who's on, I assume we do. I don't know if we have to make a motion to do that or if we need, or if we can just give, I guess I'll make a motion. How about that? Is that appropriate?
We got a motion on the table right now.
Yeah, we've got a motion on this A, Theresa, that talks about.
All right.
Travis, who made it?
Uh, it was made by Mike Jones, seconded by Joseph Jones.
You guys want to pull your stuff? Uh, I don't know as the new resolution would go, but we're good. Right now to the 15th and we can pretty much open it up without necessarily having this. We could take a resolution, I believe afterwards. Correct me if I'm wrong. Aaron?
You can, they, they can let the current resolution expire and, and if there's no future action, then it's, then it will resume to normal.
Dave, this, this resolution, this A, uh, says to extend the temporary. So we would have to vote that down in order to let the previous date.
Or, or Mike, this is Aaron. You can just take no action on that proposed item if the will of council is not to extend it.
Yeah.
And that's all the resolution.
I didn't hear you, Dave.
I think, I said, I believe you can just say, you know, pull your resol- pull the resolution out. And that will mean no vote or no nothing. We'll just go by it.
Well, but this is Teresa. I, I think, um, I would like to, um, have a different resolution that we can have at our next meeting. That would say, that would, um, if somebody wants to reschedule, I'm, I think that that's appropriate, um, that we refund or reschedule. I'm okay with that. Um, I just don't think that we should continue to have it closed.
No, Dave, you're right. It'll just run out on the 15th then, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
That's good. But can, uh, Theresa also asked, and maybe that's a separate motion, to open up the dog park immediately?
That item is not on the agenda for consideration tonight, so that would have to be at the next meeting.
Aaron, do we have to, um, uh, I mean, I, I don't even think we have to make a motion. I think if we have discussion and guide, I, I don't know, you can certainly, you, you are, um, our legal counsel, but is that something that we have to make a motion to do or can we just collectively agree that that would be what we want to happen?
Is there currently, uh, Mark, is there currently a resolution for the dog park closure?
No, not that I'm aware of. I think that was just a staff action back several months ago.
That's what I remember also. So I don't, I think we can do that just by getting direction from council.
I agree with that then.
So I was going to say. So I was going to say, sent an email and said that he wasn't willing, he wanted to, to, this is, was his plan or idea, but it wasn't. But he was looking for council guidance. And so I didn't think we did. So it was a staff decision.
Then yes, the council could just give direction then.
Yeah.
Uh, let me ask one other question now. Did we vote to close the park down?
No.
No.
That was just a staff thing, too.
So the park has remained open during the whole, the park and trail system's been open. It's just a playground that's been closed.
Okay.
So if there are no dissenting opinions, we'll just open the dog park and the playground tomorrow.
Perfect.
Yeah, within your ability, Dalton?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
So for the, the community center resolution, could we just amend the resolution to reflect extension of the, the optional closure? Like allowing people to get a refund or reschedule out until. Another, another two weeks, something days. I can't, I can't keep them all straight hardly. Because if we, if we don't bring this back until June 15th, people are only going to have, I mean, they could have 13 days before they got to know whether or not they want to reschedule their stuff. You know what I mean?
Aren't we opening it on the 15th, though?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah. So you guys are going to let the, the mandatory closure expire, but could, is it possible to amend the resolution? Or to just say, we're going to extend the refund and reschedule period by two weeks? Aaron, is that acceptable?
That, that is fine. And I think, um. I think you're going to be in your one, two, three, four, your fifth, whereas, uh, we'll say the city council wishes to extend the deadlines. Or extend the optional refund period outlined in resolution 202074. And then you can look at your dates in the next whereas to see how far out you want to allow those optional refund periods.
So Aaron, that's how I have it marked up as well. And, and then I'm okay with the dates and extending that through the end of July. I think that's fair. That gives people options, especially if they choose they don't, you know, for whatever reason. But again, this is something we, if we get to the middle of July and we need to make a change again, we certainly have the ability to, to do that. But, so I just don't want to keep it closed. I think let's move forward with letting people have their events. They're happening.
Teresa, the people that have reserved it need to be notified that it will open after the 15th.
Right.
And so the cancellation thing is independent of that.
It's saying that they can optionally, they can, if they want to not have their event, because they've made a decision that they don't want to reduce their size of their group or whatever the case may be. That's because of the current state of affairs, that they would have the option to do that through. Yeah, for another month. Okay, fine.
That's, that's fine.
Just to make sure I'm looking all this right, we're going to say you guys would like to extend the, the optional cancellation to July 31st and to let the mandatory closure expire on June the 15th? Okay.
The way I understand it.
What's the July 31st? That's the refund date?
If people don't want to follow these, the guidelines pursuant to the government's proclamation, they can seek a refund through that date.
So that's.
Did you say July 31st, Dalton, or did you say the end of June?
Uh, well, we've gotten the resolution. Uh, we're going to then the optional refund to July 31st. You guys can make it whatever you want. Just want to make sure that we're being fair to the.
Now, is it 30 days?
Whitney, is it expires at the end of June right now, correct?
So right now, the community center is closed through June 15th and the optional refund period is through July 15th.
Okay, leave it alone, in my opinion.
I'm fine with letting them go to July 31st, just to give them a little bit of extra time to be, you know, kind of a little, just because of the situation we're in. And in case they, we don't get it so that we can have more than 50% of our people. I, I mean, I, I guess, to be fair, I would think July 31st is fine, but I'm okay with whatever everybody else decides.
Okay, my, 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 my sense is July 15th is, it's already stipulated rather than two months. So that's my feeling, too. I mean, you can always extend it longer. I mean, but as of now, my recommendation would be to keep it where it is, that July 15th.
Well, that, so that, what he's suggesting is they have optional cancellation through July 15th. So I think that's fine. So the fourth whereas reads that way, okay? So if you're reading the, and then you go to the fifth where. So everything up through the fourth whereas is fine. You go to the fifth whereas, and it says the city council wishes to extend the deadline for op. And then strike the closure and, and just put for optional refund periods outlined in this resolution. The fees for, and then the sixth would be, um, for rentals of the communities that are scheduled from six. It should probably read.
I think.
15, right?
Yep.
615 to 731 will re reimburse upon.
So if you guys aren't going to extend it past the 15th, because you just, like Aaron said, do no action?
Well, but if you want, so no action that Dalton, then you don't get the extension. You, you don't get them the option to cancel their event, right? And get a refund.
Right. If the city takes no action, then the optional cancellation also expires on 715. And I, it sounds like some of you are wanting to extend that through the 31st of July, in which case you do the revisions that Teresa's talking about. If you want to leave it where the optional cancellation ends on 715 for a refund, then you wouldn't need to do anything.
Yeah, and I think I would leave it where it is. It can be an extended conversation later to extend it. I just don't see any purpose of moving it for two weeks.
What, what about the?
Sure, I'm okay with that. Dalton, would you just, if you get our request for a cancellation between the 15th and the 30th, will you just, just plan to bring that to us? And then I think the council can consider it on a case by case basis.
Yeah, we can do that. The, we try to do this a little in advance, though, because like if, if you guys are considering it in their events the next day, you know. It kind of puts them in a bind. They want to know, well, do I need to have this thing or am I going to get my money back? So we can definitely bring it to you or we can send you an email or something.
Sounds fine.
Is, is there any sort of language that we need to address or include with regards to the last resolution expiring? And so the current resolution, well, the last resolution expires and so that's the end of the closure date. So. The essentially with the opening back up in accordance with the, the governor's proclamation from the 26th of May. You know, those being the requirements we're talking about. Is there any thing we need to do regarding that? Or is that something you can just?
Mike, it appears that the way A is currently worded is what we're saying. Aaron, is that correct?
Uh, well, Mike Lefredo, I don't know that I understand your question. Mike Jones, just to answer your question quick, the city doesn't need to do anything further on that. They'll just enforce the governor's proclamation, proclamation. So I certainly, I certainly think the city needs to give that information to those that have rentals during the proclamation timeframe, though.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
I would just say, item A, stand as it is.
And. Well, we're not going to do anything.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
All right.
We just need to retract them. I think we need to retract the motion, don't we?
I'll, I'll move to withdraw my motion.
Mike, Lefredo, do you have a second on that?
Yes.
It's Joseph.
It was me, but that's fine.
Or Joseph, excuse me. I'm not keeping very good track here.
That's all right, dude.
Forgive me.
It was a long conversation.
All right, so we're not going to do anything with that one. We've got the motion retracted, so we'll just let everything go the way it is written. Next item is consideration resolution 202077, resolution approving revised job descriptions.
So this is Teresa. I would move to table this. And the reason that I'm going to is because we were supposed to have a work session. If you look at our minutes from our last meeting, that was supposed to be set up. I know that there were things sent out to schedule that. According to a conversation with Dalton, there was not a very good response. I understood from our last meeting that we were working to set up a meeting to have a presentation from our contractor to come and present the information. I am not comfortable making a decision about job descriptions without also having a conversation about the wage information that they also did. And so I think we need to do what we originally said, surprised and disappointed to see this on our, on our council agenda. Without the work session that we agreed that we were going to have at our last discussion.
I'll move.
My, my understanding is that, um, the emails were sent out and there, there wasn't a whole lot of response to that, as you stated. Was the motion to table specifically to have a work session?
It is. We're supposed to have a work session. We agreed to do it at the last meeting. I don't know for whatever reason, and I don't know why people didn't respond to the request. Maybe because, I don't, I don't know why. I'm not going to assume, make assumptions, but that's something that we agreed to do from our last meeting. It's in our, it's in our minutes. And it wasn't, so, I mean, it wasn't done. And, and then it's just back on our agenda. Well, I just don't think that's the right approach. And I think we need to hear from the contractor before, I'm interested in improving revised job descriptions. I want to have a conversation and I want to have a collective conversation about how we, the job descriptions and real, and I want to learn about, I want to know what they learned. We paid them to do something. Generally, in the past, we've always had people who have done this type of work for us come and present on it. And so we have an understanding of what their learnings were and can understand.
We have a motion to table it?
Yeah.
Back in.
Any further discussion? My only comment is that these were all written again and revised and sent out to everybody. Mark, did we get any more comments after the last revision was sent out to all the council?
I've not had any.
Well, we were given these on Friday and I looked through. Now, you say that everything is, you know, how it's supposed to be, but yet when I'm looking at the financial, at the finance director position. Let me go through and find this. It still states that she will be hired, or the, the position will be hired by the finance and personnel committee, which we don't have. I mean, there's, I still have a few questions, but I, I mean, when you get it on Friday at, you know, 2 o'clock. There's not a whole lot of time to ask questions. And today I, I had things to accomplish. And so I was not able to send out my questions, but I do have questions.
And I think that, that with, with the committee he was alluding to, and I assume that's Mark, was an ad hoc committee.
There was no, that's a holdover from before. It should not have been in the job description. There is no, nobody on that committee.
Committee, Dave, what I'm saying is it was an ad hoc committee. And, you know, with the bank manager and.
That was in the old committee. It is not in existence today.
Right. That's, my point is, it was a committee that was formed as an ad hoc committee for the financial manager.
That was to select the individual, yes.
Yeah, that's what, that's my point. So it isn't a standing committee.
That's correct.
It's if you're going to hire one, you get another committee together. Okay, so Susan has seconded it.
Hey, let's do roll call.
Harns?
Yeah.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
No.
No?
No.
And Mike Jones?
No.
The next item is consideration resolution 202078.
Dave, before you, can we confirm that we're going to put together a work session?
No.
Excuse me? We're not going to have a work session, is that what you said?
I don't think we need to. I gather you guys want, if you all want one, then we'll make a, basically. I don't know why, because job descriptions are basically a, a generic item that can be added and changed at any time by simply giving a direction to do this. It's only a guideline. It is not anything like set in code. If you were like a union rep and wanted to fire somebody for not doing something that was in there. That's not the, these are all basically managerial employees that they do what they're told. I don't know if we have to have it. You guys can make it, just make it, if you want to have a work session, I, I would say that's fine, but at this point in time. I don't see it. I'd say let's go forward, get these in, then we can move forward on to, with the contractor to do the salary discussion and get on to that. Because that's coming up before the end of the month.
Dave, on the salaries particularly, I, I would like to move that we have the consultants there.
The consultant will be here on the salary discussion. That's coming up. But right at this point in time, that's not what's on the agenda.
No, I know, but, but I'm just looking ahead, you know, rather than hindsight, that, yeah, I think that that is an important thing. And, you know, there's some, some connection with job descriptions, but I think it's, I agree with you. Job descriptions are kind of an all inclusive item. And oftentimes the last item on a job description, and it will say, and other duties as assigned by the supervisor. There's always that catch-all in most job descriptions that I've seen. So, okay, that's where I am.
So I just want to confirm that you're going to blatantly ignore 6A from our minutes from our last meeting that says that there will be a council work session on this.
We tried to schedule one, Teresa, and apparently there was no one that, we didn't have enough to even make it form.
Um, well, I think my communication was, is I'll make whatever work. So if you count that, I don't know if that makes a difference or not.
When you were one, there needed to be several more and there weren't. So that's, you know, if you want to do it again, we can try again. But that was the reason why we wanted the job descriptions to be out and get a review from everybody before we came back, because we couldn't get anybody together at one time.
Um, Aaron, can you remind me that our council work sessions can be requested by? Aaron, can you remind me, do, um, our council work sessions can be requested by at least two council members? Is that our rules of engagement?
Requested, but you got to have a forum in order to do it.
Yeah, Teresa, that's my recollection, although I know with the overhaul, I don't have that, the new version in front of me, but that is my recollection.
Okay, so, and, and then it would be scheduled, and so we, we, I, I guess I don't understand what the concern is. I, we specifically, I specifically asked for council work session to have the contractor come in, and we're, I, I'm not asking for them to go line by line on the job descriptions. I want them to give the information that they have learned. I want them to understand, I want to understand what, why they did, made the changes and give an overview of that. I mean, we've had, we've, I've been on city council when we've done this before. Dave, I'll presume maybe when you were on council last, that was, did that ever happen on your watch? Where you guys had a contractor come and present their findings?
Yes, it has.
Okay, well, this is not new, and then, so I'm just trying to understand why we would not want our contractor that we paid a, a significant amount of money to come in and present, so we can understand what their findings were, we can understand what their matrix is. I also asked for an org chart of sorts, which I've still not seen anything on that, which I just assumed would be available at a work session. So I guess I'm, I'm just struggling to, to understand why we wouldn't want to understand what the findings are of the consultant that we hired to find out information and present to us, and.
What information would you like to have, Teresa?
Teresa, I didn't hear that last thing that you said. What was the last thing you said?
Oh, because I was interrupted, so I don't know, I don't, I, now I don't even know what you didn't hear.
Okay. Well, I don't think I interrupted you, did I?
No, I did. I was accidentally overriding her. I'm sorry.
Okay.
The easiest way to deal with this is to get a new doodle poll out, and we will schedule the meeting based on the responses that I receive. I think with the last one, we only had one response, so our meeting was scheduled. So we'll, we'll schedule a meeting based on the people who respond. I think that's the only way to know what's an acceptable time.
I would also ask, thank you, Mark, that you do it, and that we've always, always held our work session in the evening hours, generally at the same time. Your first doodle poll came through with only daytime hours. That might be part of the problem, because we all actually work. And so daytime hours don't work for that, and we obviously want to be available for constituents and residents of Windsor Heights to be able to participate. That's why we have our council meetings at this hour. So I might propose we do it on the, you know, we've done them often on the off Monday. We've done them on other evenings, but we need to, we need to hold it in an evening hour so that folks can participate.
Just for your information, we did have a second doodle poll that did have the evening hours on it.
Oh, I know.
So.
Teresa, why don't you recommend the times you want on that?
I don't recommend the time. That's not what this is about. It's not, I, I will respond to a doodle poll, but I'm just suggesting that that's what's worked in the past, and I might recommend that you offer evening times, not daytime, when, when we all work and can't participate. I mean, that might be the first problem with the first doodle poll.
We didn't have any further response on the second doodle poll either, so, Mark, we'll try again.
We will send out a new poll with time starting at 5:00 PM. Is that an acceptable start time?
I would suggest no earlier than 5:30. I don't think we've ever, we've started a meeting before 5:30.
5:30 will be the earliest time we list. Thank you.
Hey, did we have, Travis, we had a motion to table that again?
Yeah, it, it, Pat, the motion to table passed three to two.
Okay. Next item, consideration resolution 2020-78, resolution purchasing flood insurance for the community center, public workshop, and salt storage building in the amount of $44,433.
So.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Go ahead, whoever.
No, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I, I, I think it's, we can't predict we're going to have a flood this year or next year, or when it's going to be. And, and that rate will continue to go up. I think we need to have some long-term planning. And actually, Dalton and I talked a little bit today, and I talked to Mark about it too. But I, I think this $44,000 is just like putting a drop in a big bucket for one year. And so unless we want to agree to make it a reoccurring intention of the vote, I would say that we not do that by the insurance. That's my thought on it.
Any other comments or discussion on that?
So this is Teresa, and so I was just wondering if, so when this came to our, was on council agenda last, I think we suggested, or, or at least I did, that you take this back to Public Works Committee and consider what the long-term plan was as well. So I guess I'm a little concerned that we're coming forward now with a recommendation to get insurance. And so at this cost, which is incredibly expensive, and, and so I'm not supportive of insurance. I'd really, like, right now, I would like to understand and know what all of, you came with multiple solutions, and now we're down to, and we didn't make a decision. We said that we needed more information, and, and this was one of the pieces that we needed more information on. But I, again, I think that we need to have some long-range planning on what we're going to do with flooding in our community as a whole, and I don't think that just buying this insurance today is the right answer. And did this go to Public Works or Budget and Finance before it came here?
Didn't go to Public Works.
Didn't go to Budget and Finance?
It was discussed at the last meeting that this would be one of the interim solutions while the long-term was being looked at.
Well, and I, yeah, David, we could predict floods. It would be fine, but we can't, and I think there's some contingency plans, and I, I talked to Dalton a little bit about it. I mean, floods don't just normally crop up in 10 minutes. I mean, you can kind of predict when they're potential floods, and, and, so, I mean, the equipment stored in the Public Works Building can be moved out. And, and, and if it doesn't flood, we move it back in. So I think there's some contingency plans that could be established, and certainly Dalton's capable of doing that. But as far as this one-year thing, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not aboard.
Well, I think it's just important that, I mean, we understand that this information was presented to us, and we didn't have a full discussion about, you know, all of the options, but this was an option presented. And I'm, you know, I'm not in favor of it, but that's a responsibility, or that's a choice that potentially we make as a council. I just want, you know, if that's the route we go, we, this, we were told these things, and so if, you know, there are potentially consequences, well, we need.
Always are.
Okay, so I'm confused. I thought you guys moved, moved to approve that.
Well, you have to, we're going to vote it down.
We moved to approve the discussion. That was, yes, that's, yeah.
All right, okay, very good. I, I was confused. Okay, thank you for your clarification.
Okay, so based on comments and discussions, it kind of looks like I've got, you know, maybe three that don't want to do it. You want to pursue and go with roll call, or do you want to withdraw your resolution?
Well, I guess more so, the, where we left this last time was, you guys wanted me to get the elevation certificates and then get updated quotes for the insurance, so, I don't, I mean, I think that whatever we end up doing should be you guys' decision, but if we decide to not get insurance, is that, where do we go from here then? Just let it lie and roll the dice, or continue to options, or what would you like?
I think you need to take this, like we said before, you need some long-range quote planning. I sent you some documents from other sources on flood planning and that sort of thing. I think that you need to, either you put together an ad hoc committee, or you take it to your Public Works Committee, and that, and then, because that's the reason that we have our committee structure, and so that would be my recommendation, is you take it to your committee and you, you unpack it, and then you guys make it, you guys come with some, forward with some recommendations for long-term planning on this topic in particular, and you bring it back to the council, and then we can consider it and move it forward from there. So I don't think we ignore it. I don't think it, you know, fits the way we said, we roll the dice. I don't think that that's what we're suggesting at all. I think what we're saying is, is we need to, we need a strategic approach to this, as opposed to just a one-off, here, buy some insurance and, you know, cross your fingers, and then at the cost of $45,000 annually, and then it'll continue to grow. I don't, I think we're looking for something a little bit more substantive, substantive, and then I would also suggest that, I know that there's multiple, there are, there are other approaches, and so I, I think that those are the options that you bring to whatever committee looks at this, and then they can make the recommendations about what comes forward to council. That's our committee process.
So Mike and Mike, would you like us to come to the Public Works Committee, or Finance Committee, or what?
Well, I think the Public Works Committee would be fine after you have some tentative thoughts to present to them, to the committee, and certainly I'd be happy to sit down with you and look at your thoughts to consider by that. When you're having a meeting and they just come up with ideas, they have to look at some options to make a resolution perhaps, and then I think it's worthwhile taking it to a committee. But they're not going to do the research and comparing other cities and what they do, that type of thing, so.
One of, one of the things, Mike, and the rest of you, that, you know, we got to look at where we might be able to do anything if we were to move those, that facility. We have economic development properties that are out there, and to move them is probably going to be very expensive.
Yeah, that would be on the table.
This is, this is a cover your rear end for the one year that it would take to do the studies and come back and give you the full documentation.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think there's anything off, off the table, and the Public Works Committee can toss all those around and, and just get their input. I mean, they're not experts on flooding for sure, but.
Okay, so I take it from what our conversation is, is we'll take it to the Public Works Committee, and we've got a motion to approve. You want to pull it back in, or you want to just go forward and say no?
Hey, Mary, well, if I'm, so I also requested from the insurance company, and they're looking into it still, because I thought that the intent was to get the insurance while we figured out next best steps, because I think we're looking at, if we decide to move the shop or do any substantial improvements to that area, we're looking at a couple of years, so I thought that it would be wise to insure it for at least a couple of years while we put a plan together. And so I've asked the insurance agent to let us know that if we purchase insurance now, if we can pay it monthly, or if they need lump sum payment upfront, and if we do get it, if they, they lock it in for an entire year, if we can terminate at any point, like if we decide to move. I've also asked for them to provide information on adjustable premium policies, so we can have low, low premium, high deductible, or high premium, low deductible, and anything in between, so more before.
Let me interrupt a little bit. We have a motion and second on the table, and I would move for the call stream of whether we want to accept this or not, because that is the motion.
Okay, roll call.
Skeeris?
No.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Alfredo?
No.
Mike Jones?
No.
Dan Harms?
No.
Resolution did not pass. Next item is new business consideration resolution 2020-79, waiving the parklet fee from the R.I. Restaurant in the amount of $1,300.
I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear you, Dave, at least.
Consideration of resolution 2020-79, waive the parklet rental fee for the R.I. Restaurant in the amount of $1,300.
Both to a bro.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, um, second, second was by Harms, or by Skeeris?
Yes.
Or, or Jones, Skeeris?
So Travis, could you repeat that?
Yeah, I had the motion, motion by Harms, second by Skeeris.
Okay, just before you take the vote, I, I just wanted to verify, so on here it says $1,300. I don't know if the math is right, and then on, hold on, I'm looking for the, I wrote it on the actual document. If you look at the resolution, I think it says, or it says $1,400, and so I think it's the total for the 350 for the four months is, or the three months is $1,400, so I just want to make sure that the, we have the right number. Here it is, yeah, so it says in your subject, you have $1,300, and then in the, oh, that's the general information, but in the resolution and the, and now therefore it be resolved is 1,300, it should be 14. And it's also in your title.
Okay, I'll amend the resolution to reflect that the cost is 1,400.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Skeeris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration of pay request number one, University Avenue Project.
Both to a bro.
Second.
Any discussion?
Does anybody want to give us an update?
Pardon?
Dalton, do you want to, or Justin, somebody want to give us an update on University Avenue?
Yeah, this is Justin. I can give you a quick update. We finished paving that first phase one A, was it last week or the week before? Now they're on to that second phase of that phase one, so two B. We extended that a little ways, just to help out with some reallocations for Century Link there on the corner. They have a major duck line that will be fighting by the hole width of this. So they said removal start in, they'll start with subgrade preparation and whatnot here this week, and some storm sewer work as well. So hopefully we'll paving again here in another few weeks, and then we'll start some backfilling and site restoration. There's some signal work there at the entrance to High V along with some, the bus stop location as well on that side. So there's some more things other than roadway going on with this phase, so it might take just a tad longer than the first one.
Thank you.
Any other comments? No other comments, and roll call.
Skeeris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Alfredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Dan Harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration resolution 2020-80, setting the time and place for public hearing on an ordinance 20-03, amending chapter 101 of the Windsor Heights Code of Ordinances relating to stormwater drainage utility.
Both to a bro.
Second.
Discussion? Dalton, you want to explain? Discussion. Dalton, you want to explain it?
You're muted, Dalton.
You're muted. Yep.
All right, man, I started off so hot too, man. It was sounding great. Start over. All right. So there's three things that we need to do for the, uh, stormwater code. All right, I'm looking at my other screen here. So the first one is defining what an equivalent, equivalent residential unit is. The second one is, um, put the scheduled rate of increases in there that were approved, the stormwater rate study last year. And then include language that allows the cities to submit to the county to file a lien for non-paying stormwater utility fees. Uh, directly following the resolution is the redlined portion of the chapter. And then after that is, uh, the, the stormwater rate analysis that they did. It showed proposed rate on, it's on page 89 of the packet. Proposed rates for each of the years are, uh, down at the bottom. And then I did a, just a quick survey of our neighbors codes, Ankeny, West Des Moines, Clive, Urbendale, Des Moines, Altoona, Waukees, and our current code versus proposed on what they define as an ERU, which is an equivalent residential unit. And then what, what they charge for an ERU and if they allow for incremental charges, uh, in excess of one ERU. So right now, uh, we're an outlier that we don't currently define an ERU. So I don't, that, that's not right. We are below currently the market average for a cost per ERU. Um, and we don't allow, or we don't have anything in our code that specifies whether or not we can charge for incremental portions of an ERU. Any questions? I'd be happy to take them.
Didn't we just raise them?
Yep. So it's scheduled to increase every year by 3%.
You, you, are we going to catch up and be at the average at least?
Yeah. The, the reason that they came to that 3% increase annually is to fund our stormwater projects. They came out of the stormwater plan. So this year, most of our stormwater capital money is going towards our CIP, obviously. And then as we get more funds, we'll do more projects.
Okay. I mean, is that, is that your recommendation to, to go up 3% a year?
Uh, that was done by our financial advisor. That might've been Tiana, independent public advisors. That's Tiana, isn't it?
Yeah, I think I kind of remember that too. And we equalize the rates between commercial and.
Yep. And so what a lot of cities do is put what their rate, they do these water studies and then they put those rates for the next 10 years, put them in their code. So I think it's Des Moines, or I can't remember who it is, but they have code, they have rates all the way back from 2004 to like 2025 or something. So we just put what the effective rate is right now, but then we're going to have to crack it open every year and keep updating it. Whereas you guys already approved the study, um, the rates aren't increasing by much, uh, 3%. So, uh, so this year it'll be a 17 cent increase per residential property, which is very, I mean, obviously that's minimal. So.
That falls right. And of course, Des Moines changes things, uh, right and left, like the tax levy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of interesting to look at is on that summary page, on, uh, page 90 of the packet. Where we are with our rates, like the city of Des Moines is $14.25. We're at $5.50. And so to kind of throw out, I don't want to call Des Moines data junk, but it's just so far different than everybody else's. I didn't mean and median to kind of get the outliers out of there. And so that's why I did both of those column, the column or the rows at the bottom of the sheet.
That is wise. Very wise.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, this is simply for setting the, uh, date to make that change. What was the date? Next month or next meeting?
Yes.
Roll call.
June 15.
Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Ken Harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration resolution 202081, setting the time and place for a public hearing for ordinance 2020-04, regarding an ordinance pending chapter 60 dot 10 dot 07 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the definition of unimproved surface with regard to parking prohibitions. Move to approve setting the public hearing?
Vote to approve.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm sorry. It's Chad. Are you driving?
Huh?
Just watching. I'm actually stopping in a parking lot, but yes.
That was my only question.
Okay, roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Ken Harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consider approval of expenditure to Raycom in the amount of $14,175 to facilitate emergency radio programming and software upgrades. Motion?
So I'll move.
Back in.
Chad, you want to, uh, explain something in between?
Sure. I sent out, uh, the update on the council action form and the email. But, uh, basically we were told by Polk County that as part of their radio system upgrade, they will be converting their radio system to a phase two system. We're currently on phase one and basically without getting too technical, the difference is that on phase two, you can run twice as many radios on one channel as you can on phase one. So it increases the capability of the, the, uh, radio system. I asked, what if we didn't want to do that? And they weren't real thrilled with that thought. And, uh, we got with Raycom and came back and Raycom said we could stay phase one, but that's going to reduce functionality of our radios to the point where officers would only be able to hear the channel they're actually on. As, um, with a phase one radio on that channel, it would pull that channel back to phase one from phase two. The problem with that is that the officers and the fire department both would not be able to listen to any other channels except the one their radio is set to. So, uh, the officers listen to our dispatch channel as well as a, uh, what we call a talk around channel where they communicate with each other off of the main dispatch channel. And our fire department listens to the dispatch channel as well as what's called cat channels, which is where, um, all of the act, actual activity on a fire ground happens. So it would be a significant loss of, uh, functionality if we did not move. I reached out to Westcom to, uh, kind of vet this information through them and discuss it with them about it. And, uh, they said that their, their system is phase two, their actual radios are getting ready to be reprogrammed as well to phase two. So when we move over there, we would need to, need to have that upgrade or that, uh, programming update anyway. So this benefits both systems. Um, we currently have the money in the budget this fiscal year to do it, um, in some overages that we had. So, um, my recommendation was that we go ahead and do it now, uh, since it does benefit us in the long run. And, uh, since we have the extra money in the budget to do it.
Do we have a?
Thanks for the.
You have a motion, Dave?
Yes, we got a motion in a second because we're in discussion.
Um, thanks for the update, Chad. I, I really appreciate that. Um, can you or Rochelle, um, help us understand where the overages are or how we have kind of, we're towards the end of our, um, so if you could understand, help us understand where the overages are?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, I don't know why this was done. And I don't know if Travis maybe can speak to it a little more, but in our general insurance line for both police and fire, under the previous city administrator, that line was heavily overfunded. Uh, that line is running, I think in the seven to $10,000 range a year, uh, for both police and fire. And it's funded at about 30, I believe, for both police and fire. And as I understand it, and Travis, you may have to weigh in here if you remember or understand why, but I think it was to help try to reduce some of the direct levy maybe, um, which, um, it didn't do. So we've actually got, uh, for the past two years, I think there was about 20,000 overage in the, the, uh, general insurance because of the way that that was budgeted by the administrator and that's been fixed going forward.
Yeah, all I can recall those numbers came from, from not me. So I don't, I don't know what, um, why that would have been that way.
That's helpful. Thank you.
They were not mine either, because I, I've got a, a four-year track on what our budget numbers were and that's not what we had. So I, I also don't know where it came from.
All right. But it has been fixed moving forward into the next fiscal year?
That's correct. Uh, a lot of the, the budget lines have been adjusted over the past two years to clean things up and get stuff where they belong. And, uh, that overage is not there, uh, going forward.
Right. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Ken Harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration approval of the 2080 agreement for members of Polk County Emergency Management Commission for funding of their management administration, the amount of $2,945 annually for physical years 2021, 2122, and 2223.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Ken Harms?
Yeah.
Next item is consideration resolution 202082, establishing a city of Windsor Heights Small Business Recovery Grant Program in the amount of $25,000.
Vote to approve.
Mark, do you want to say a few words on that?
Well, the Economic Development Committee met and decided this was the appropriate thing to do, which I agree with. And, uh, I think it'd be, I think it's great that the city's able to do this. And well, what I'm planning to do is wait till the greater Des Moines partnership gets their responses to us. I think there are some businesses in Windsor Heights that are going to qualify through their program. And once we know how that plays out, then we will have this money available to deal with anybody who hasn't been accounted for at that point. It's going to be up to the Economic Development Committee and the City Council ultimately to decide in both programs, who is funded and at what amount.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Ken Harms?
Yeah.
Council reports, updates. Trish, you want to go first? I think we had a Metro, didn't we?
We did. Um, so nothing, um, significant came out of, uh, Metro Waste Meeting, um, last, um, two Wednesdays ago or now. Um, but we do have, um, I have asked, I did check on the cardboard, um, uh, drop off over the weekend. And, um, I think they've been doing a good job at getting that, um, cleaned up, um, and emptied. Um, I didn't see anything on Saturday sitting, was it Saturday? Sunday? I don't remember now, um, uh, outside of the unit itself. And then, um, we have, and thank you, uh, I assume Whitney, you created the post, uh, for the Facebook. I know I've had a lot of comments. I shared, um, the, uh, um, pickup day, the garbage pickup day is, uh, this weekend. So, um, just a reminder and share that on your Facebook if you haven't. I've, I've gotten a lot of positive comments for reminding folks because I think it's, um, not been top of mind. So. That's all I have.
This is, this is the curb side pickup, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Mike Lefredo, you have anything?
Dave, I just want to, uh, not reiterate, but a comment on the speaker that we had earlier. Because I hear a lot of nuisance complaints and Mark, you've been involved with one of them. And I really think we need to review the ordinances regarding parking, not only cars, but all vehicles, boats, uh, RVs, et cetera. What's, what's happened and over time, the two-car garages aren't satisfactory. There's like an additional three cars in the, in the driveway and that. But, and some are off on the, off the, off the concrete. And some are a menace. They're not used. We know they're not used, but I think we need to review that. I reviewed, uh, just recently door walks. And, uh, I mean, it's pretty comprehensive. Like, I don't know what ours is exactly. Well, I, I think we've got to, and the intent of that speaker, I think was good, is we want to keep this city from aggressing into a real sloppy, um, and let things go by, these nuisances. I mean, I don't think we want to nitpick, but I do think, um, expectations need to be high. And so that's where I am on that. I don't have an answer yet. But I think we need to, to, to review that regarding parking and number of vehicles and, and, and the types of vehicles. So, um, in the case that I'm citing, that I was involved with, I mean, there was two, there was a boat and there's a car and they're not used, period. They haven't been used for the five years I've lived here. And, uh, neighbors say it's been that way for 10 years. And so, um, oftentimes flat tires or they're not, uh, current, current licensed, uh, vehicles aren't licensed currently. And apparently I don't know that that's a violation, but, uh, yeah, it just in a noance. Uh, it's a vacant house essentially. There's an owner and he stops by once a day at least, but it's a vacant house. Oh, that's my two cents worth. I, I just think this is a really a nice city and people have a lot of pride in their properties. And, but there are a few that really neglect some things that are common sense. And so I, I just think it needs to be talked about at some point.
Mike Jones?
Uh, nothing new. There is a Bravo meeting coming up, uh, next Tuesday at 7:30. First time we've met in a while. Um, so after that meeting, I'll, I'll have an update for the council.
Jason?
I don't have anything.
Joseph?
I don't either.
Okay. Mark?
A total of 29 resumes are received for the city administrator position by the May 29th deadline. Darlene Stevens is pursuing 10 for preliminary interviews and is intending to complete that work and get it to the city by the 16th of this month. Interviews are currently scheduled for the last week of the month, which starts June 29th. It's interesting that I wrote this before the meeting tonight, but what I wrote is I have spent a lot of time in the last week or so on nuisance abeyment issues. Finally, Whitney and I will be reviewing the business related entries on the city's website on Friday. That's all.
Say, Mark, on, on those, uh, applications for the administrator, um, you said there's 20, what?
Darlene told me she received 29 resumes.
And she's trying to whittle it down to what?
10.
Okay. Uh, my thinking based on our prior experience is that maybe she ought to expand that a little bit. And, uh, and let us pick from there. And I also think. And I also think rather than interviewing five, maybe you want to interview seven of them. I know it takes more time, but I think we just really want to be thorough this time. And I mean, there could have been a good one that we didn't interview. And it's always, always the rest. So that's my thinking going forward on selecting this person.
So how many do you want her to bring forward?
It's the feeling of the group, but I would say at least a dozen. Minimal 12.
Okay, I will inform her.
And Mark, just one more thing. I think we could interview, like I said, like seven people and whittle it down to the final three or something, and then bring them back. I mean, that I think those kinds of steps could be taken. I'm not saying to do it, but I'm suggesting that we can vary the process a little bit to consider, just to consider it.
And that's fine, and when you get the 12, then the council can decide how many you want to interview.
Correct.
So you don't need to make that decision today, but.
No, I'm not making any decision right now, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Mark, can you tell us, oh, go ahead, Vivian.
Can you just, I didn't catch everything that you said about what Whitney and you were doing, something about business?
Whitney and I will be reviewing the business-related entries on the city's website on Friday.
Thank you.
This is Teresa, just real quick back to the applicants. Do we have a timeline on when we would do interviews? I'm trying to schedule something.
They're tentatively scheduled for the week of the 29th. Now, I think the 29th is a, is that a Monday? Yeah, the 29th is, no, June, this month.
Oh, is that when we're doing the interviews?
Yes. You will receive the recommendations from Charlene. She told me today on the 15th of the 16th. And the interviews are scheduled the week of the 29th. Now, the 29th is a Monday. So then that takes you to July 4th is the weekend. And I don't know what people think about doing interviews the week of July 4th.
I think it might have been problematic for the, for the applicants too.
But if you can, if you can find a way to do them during the week, then that eliminates that problem. Otherwise, it probably puts it on until July 10th and 11th.
We can talk about that at the next meeting, can't we?
Sure.
Anything further? Travis, you got a comment or two?
Yeah, I spirited issue doing some of the temporary use of structures, fireworks stands, home occupation permits last week. I'm back in the office now. And then I've also registered for the Municipal Clerks Academy in July. I'll have all the coursework completed and I'll obtain my municipal clerk finance officer status after my third anniversary with the city, which is July 15th of '21. And I'll have to, you know, continue to go to conferences. I did attend the Iowa Unemployment Conference virtually for two days in April. Unfortunately, IMFO did not accept that as credit. They were one of the only ones that did not. So once the conference, conferences get back into the swing of things after COVID, we'll have to continue to maintain our attendance at both to get those certifications. So I just wanted to kind of clarify some of that since I got brought up at the last meeting. And that's it.
Dave, can I just mention that Whitney is sending out welcome, welcome letters, welcome cards? That's being done. No further discussion. Motion to adjourn to the 15th.
Real quick, this is Teresa. Mark, can you tell us what the plan is for the staff returning to the, to the office? So I think Travis is there, Dalton has been there.
Yeah, well, I sent out an email on that last week. So as of today, Whitney is in five days a week. Travis is in five days a week. Rochelle, I believe, is going to be in three days a week. I'm planning to be in three days a week. We will be doing temperature testing. The chief was able to obtain a thermometer last week. So we're going to talk about that and our staff tomorrow. So when, when anybody comes into the building for the first time during a day, they will do a temperature check, just verify that their temperature is below the recommended level. And I honestly can't remember what that is right off the top of my head, but just be sure.
100.4.
Thank you. And as I said in the email, I think we can do business without actually having anybody in the building. So I would encourage you to review the email. And if anybody believes that's not correct, or it's not what you want to do, it's ultimately up to the city council, obviously, by what happens. Just telling you my opinion.
Mark, I think there are some people that don't have computers and smartphones and that that are used to just walking in. And so I think we need to talk about it. And then this is not a criticism, but just an observation. All those postings on the windows and handwritten sticky note on the door, they just don't look very professional. And I think there's probably a better way to put those, put those on.
We will put this whole subject on the June 15th agenda, and you folks can decide how you want to do that.
Okay.
Can I, Mike, you said that Whitney was sending out welcome letters to people?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Lefredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Dan Harms?
Yeah.
Okay, folks, we'll adjourn until 6:15. Thank you much. Thanks, Dave.